Ready?
Of course.
All right. It is six thirty-one. I call this regular planning commission meeting to order at six thirty-one. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, Youth Commissioner Ramadip Jawanda is absent. Commissioner Marilyn Abalon?
Present.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Present.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Present.
Chair Davet Mohammed?
Present. There are no presentations. We'll move on to public comment.
Okay, so we have, for non-agendized items, we have Yvonne Bagansky.
Can I, let me read my little spiel.
Oh, I'm sorry, Yvonne. Just give us one second, please.
So, public comment this time is reserved for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on the item during the meeting. Click the Raise Your Hand button if joining by computer or press star nine if joining by phone when the item is called. The planning commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the planning commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. Any handouts for distribution to the planning commission must be emailed by 3:00 PM on meeting day. Thank you. Yvonne?
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Yvonne Bagansky, and I'm a resident of Napa County. I'm also the Conservation Director for the Napa Solano Autobahn Society. I'm also a member of the Sierra Club, and I'm also the founder of the Napa County Wildlife Habitat Conservation Coalition. I'm here today to talk to you about the possibility of putting together a presentation tailored for the planning commission on the impact of development on the conservation in the areas around American Canyon. We had been getting together as groups for several months, and one of the things we talk about is how do we educate the people who are in the positions of power in making policy? How do they understand what we're trying to do? Because I come to the meetings, I have three minutes, and I can say a lot of things about eagles or sightings, but really, there needs to be a comprehensive conversation between the groups. So, I offer you the opportunity to invite us for a presentation, and we would be happy to put something together specifically for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Okay, we have John Plath?
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Pitlack. I'm a representative of the Northern California Carpenters Union. I'd like to speak a little bit about the importance of area standard wages and benefits, and why they matter for both workers and businesses. Fair wages are essential for economic stability and worker satisfaction. When wages are in line with area standards, employees are more likely to stay with their employers, leading to lower turnover and increased productivity. It also helps ensure that workers are compensated fairly for their skills and economic necessities of their location. Wages aren't the only component for fair compensation. Benefits matter, too. Health insurance, retirement plans, and vacation are just as important to ensuring an employee's well-being. Just as with wages, benefits should be competitive and meet area standards to support workers in both their personal and professional lives. By maintaining area standards in wages and benefits, we promote income equality. It creates a more equitable environment for all employees, ensuring that everyone is treated fairly. In conclusion, area standard wages and benefits aren't just numbers. They're a reflection of fairness and respect to workers. By ensuring compensation is aligned with the area standards, we can create more balanced and thriving economy for both employees and businesses. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Okay, there's nobody else in the room, and we have no one else on Zoom, so.
I'll go ahead and close public comment. Director Cooper, are there any agenda changes?
Thank you. There are no agenda changes tonight.
Moving on to the consent calendar.
There we go. Turn the microphone on, helps. I will make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, just bear with me for one second. Commissioner Marilyn Abalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Chair Davet Mohammed?
Aye. Moving on to public hearings, we'll start with the Crawford Way multifamily project design permit. Are there any disclosures? Go ahead.
Oh, hold on. Let's see. There we go. Um, there we go. Sorry.
All right. Good evening, Chair Mohammed and members of the planning commission and members of the public. William Heave of the Planning Division, very happy to be here today to give a presentation on the Crawford Multifamily Project. This is one of the larger projects, so I've broken it up to a couple of sections, and I have the agenda today. We'll start with the project info, and then we'll take a look at the architecture, the parking access, landscaping amenities, inclusionary housing, development waivers, there's site-specific issues, and then public outreach and staff's recommendation for the project. So, this project is before you today because it is a housing project, and it's subject to the California Housing Crisis Act. The applicant has requested to continue this meeting into April, which conflicts with the Housing Crisis Act. One of the main concerns we have is that the Crisis Act says that a city or a public agency cannot conduct more than five public hearings on a housing project, and even continued hearings count as a public hearing. Because this is the third public hearing, we really want to bring this project before you guys and give an explanation of what this project entails. There are, including this one, there are two remaining, and I think I just got a update from City Attorney Ross that the appeal might not count as one of the five, but we still don't want to be backed against the wall with public hearings. So, that's why we're going to take this and then let you guys make a decision on this project. So, let's start with the location and give you some bearings of where this project is. It is at the southwest corner of Crawford and Highway 29. The site is approximately 4.3 acres. It is directly to the north, we have Canyon Plaza. To the northwest, we have the American Canyon Library. We have some residential homes on the west side, and then the Open Door Church is directly to the south, and then to the east is Highway 29. The site has two access points. The main entry will be on Crawford, and then we have an emergency vehicle access, which acronym is EVA, that leads to the highway, but that's only for fire trucks and emergency access vehicles. The site consists of approximately sixteen residential buildings, and then we have one community building on the center-south area. So, here's the project information. The project consists of a hundred three-story home dwelling units. Sixty-eight of those units will be two-bedroom. Thirty-two units of those will be three-bedroom. Sixteen buildings, one recreation building, and a children's playground near the recreation building. Two-hundred-and-sixteen vehicle parking spaces and eight bicycle parking spaces. The project is subject, requests a density bonus and several waivers of development standards, which they can request per state law, and it's them invoking their rights there. The architecture is modern industrial, and then the project includes furniture improvements on both the Crawford side and Highway 29. I want to share some photos of the site. Right now, it is vacant. This is from the northeast corner, looking southwest. This is on Crawford Way, and I took these photos about two weeks ago. This is another vantage point from the northwest corner facing west, and then the bottom is the one that's on Crawford facing south. For architecture, the site consists of the, kind of like a modern farmhouse, very similar to the Canyon Plaza buildings. There are three stories, and they have garages on the very first floor. The applicant has thoughtfully placed the front of the units facing Crawford and Highway 29, so they have like their nice side facing the street, and then the more, the rears are all facing inside of the site. Here's a, kind of like a photo simulation of how those buildings look. They have balconies on the second floor, patios on the first floor, and a variety of materials for the architecture itself. I want to share the three-bedroom type floor plan. So, each unit has three stories, and so the first story is a two-car garage. The second story has the kitchen, family, and dining room, as well as the balcony for the second story. And then the third floor has the three bedrooms and two baths. And it's a combined living square footage is sixteen hundred and thirty-two square feet. And then the two-bedroom type is very similar. The garage on the bottom floor, kitchen, dining, and family room on the second floor with a balcony, and then two bedrooms on the third floor on top. And those are twelve hundred and twelve square feet. Parking and access, the site has two-hundred-and-sixteen parking spaces. Of the two-hundred-and-sixteen, two-hundred of those parking spaces are garages, so each of the hundred units will have a two-car covered garage. And then there's the sixteen uncovered guest spaces, which are placed near the community center. Eight bicycle parking spaces per the zoning code, and the total number of parking spaces is a little bit under our required number, but I'll get to that when I talk about the waivers later on. For landscaping and amenities, the site consists of three pasos that they have between some of the buildings. They have the rec center that's about twenty-four hundred square feet on the south, and then they have a playground that's near the rec center. And then about one acre, it's zero-point-nine-five, so it's about one acre of landscaping around the site itself. Along Highway 29, they're using crepe myrtle trees as well as red buds, and then along the Crawford side, they're using ginkgo biloba trees. So... I want to talk a little bit about inclusionary and affordable housing. This has been a question that some folks have asked through our ecomments. And the project before you today is looking at the design, the design permit, which defines the site, site plan, architecture, and parking. And the applicant can decide whether to go make these dwelling units for rent as apartments or condominiums if they choose to. If they do proceed with apartments, then they will have to provide fifteen percent of the units, or fifteen units, as affordable. And under that affordable units, five units will be very low, five units will be low-income, and then five units will be moderate. If they choose to do condominiums, then ten percent of the units have to be affordable. And if they go that route, they have to complete a condominium subdivision map, which they have to bring back to the planning commission and the city council later. So, there's some flexibility. What we added as a condition of approval to the design permit is that they have to make that choice prior to the first building permit, so they will come back later on. And now we get to some of the waivers. Because this project is a housing project that includes affordable housing, the applicant has invoked these development standards waivers. So, state law grants the applicant the right to zoning development standard waivers as long as they comply with health and safety laws, and these all do. So, the first one is density bonus. The site is in a local serving mixed-use zone, and the density, the maximum density allowed is twenty dwelling units per acre. And twenty dwelling units with a four-point-three-acre site equals to approximately eighty-six units. They needed more density for this project to proceed. This is something that they have explained to staff even in the beginning of the project. So, they're using a density bonus to increase the density to twenty-four dwelling units per acre, which would make it a hundred and five units max. They're choosing to do a hundred instead of a hundred and five. With the density bonus law, the developers can provide a less parking than required compared to the city's municipal code. So, if they go by the city's code, for the hundred units, they're required two-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces, and they're providing two-hundred-and-sixteen, so there's a difference of nine that they're not providing. But according to state law, the minimum is a big difference. The state law allows them to go one-point-five parking spaces per unit, and so the minimum according to state law is a hundred fifty units. So, they've exceeded the state law minimum by a lot, but they haven't met the city's municipal code, but state law trumps the city for that aspect. The third waiver is a height increase. So, according to the Broadway specific plan, buildings within the setback facing a road, the first thirty feet is required to be less than twenty-four feet. So, this diagram kind of shows how the project is on Crawford, and this orange line is where the thirty feet would be. So, they have like, I don't know, maybe like ten units that are right on that line, and they can't make their buildings like shorter just there. So, that's why they're requesting like all their buildings, even the ones within that thirty-foot setback, to be thirty-eight feet tall, which is consistent with all of their buildings. And then, three more waivers. The garage size minimum for, according to the municipal code, is ten by twenty per covered space and a seven-foot-six tall ceiling. And so, if it's a two-car garage, it's twenty by twenty. The applicant is requesting their garages to be a little bit smaller, eighteen by twenty, and then the ceiling for some parts of the garages to be as low as six foot three. And that's just because they have some overhead stairways on the garage, so the entire stairway is not, the entire garage is not the same height. Besides the stairway portion, the garage is actually nine foot tall, so. The next waiver is the building-to-building setbacks. The applicant has requested the building setbacks between two of the faces to be twenty-five feet, whereas the Broadway specific plan requires thirty-five feet between those. And the last one that they have requested is the balconies. So, the balconies, this is a Broadway district standard, is minimum depth is six feet, and the minimum size is fifty square feet. And so, they can accommodate the size where their balconies are actually eighty-four square feet, but the depth, they can only do four foot and six inches. So, about one and a half feet shorter than what's required. However, even with the shorter distance, this is okay from a safety point of view. Next, we have site-specific issues. Seven specific issues to this site: Broadway district, traffic impact fees, overhead utilities, noise and acoustics, and fire and trash collection is also, and also the earthquake zone. So, this project is located in the Broadway district. The Broadway district consists of two-hundred-and-ninety-two acres. I'm sure most of you have seen this map before. It was approved in July of 2019, and with the approval, the site, the environmental impact report approved eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot of commercial spaces and twelve hundred units. One of the things that they included in the study was the breakdown of where those units will be. And of the twelve hundred units, the local serving mixed-use was only allotted eighty-six units. One of the things that the Broadway district specific plan allows is for transfer of units between different sub-districts. And for this project, staff is recommending the transfer of fourteen units from the medium residential zone into the local serving mixed-use zone so that they can get a hundred units in the local serving mixed-use. There hasn't been any proposed projects for a medium residential zone, so it seems like a good fit to make this adjustment. With the adjustment, the total number of units will still remain as twelve hundred. Next, we have traffic impact fee. This has been a question from a couple of commuters as well. The project includes a study for traffic impact, and it calculated that this project will bring six-hundred-and-seventy-four net new trips to the area, to that site. New development brings more traffic. Traffic for the fees that this project will bring in is around half a million dollars, four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars and eight-hundred-and-fifty-five, because the traffic impact fees is seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars per trip, according to its current fee schedule. Included in the fees, included in their project, the applicant will bring new curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Crawford and Highway 29. They will include a Class II bicycle lane along Crawford, a twelve-foot multi-purpose path along Highway 29, and then furniture improvements. These furniture improvements are not subject to the traffic impact fee reimbursement, so these are just things that the applicant is required to do. Additionally, they're going to bring a new mid-block pedestrian raised crosswalk between Crawford and Canyon Plaza. So, that's in the middle of the street. This new raised crosswalk will enhance the resident access to Canyon Plaza, the library, and the post office, and this one will be something that the developer will complete, but will get a deduction for the traffic impact fee. So, it's good to see that the traffic impact fee is providing a new feature just at their site. And as usual, the staff looked at overhead utilities and see if the site had any that could be undergrounded. This site doesn't have like overhead wires along Highway 29, but they do have three poles and wires that are going into their site. This is on the southwest corner. And so, there's a public works condition of approval that they will have to underground these poles as well as the wires prior to construction. Noise and acoustics, the applicant has conducted a noise study for the project. They will be adding some sound reducing windows and doors for the units facing Broadway so they can comply with the city's noise ordinance. And then there's a whole slew of noise reduction mitigation measures in the study. I think I counted almost like thirty of them, but some of the highlights is that they're going to have a designated noise complaint officer. They will have equipment within, any equipment within a hundred feet of the nearest residential property will be acoustically shielded, and they're going to try to use noise-reduced equipment as much as possible. We're not going to list all of those mitigation measures in the conditions. We're just going to say that they have to comply with the study. So, that's kind of like an umbrella of what they're going to have to do. There was some concern about fire access. This is their fire apparatus plan, and according to the fire district, this is okay with them. They can bring a fire truck to some of the furthest homes in the site. And this is the same with the trash collection and recology. They've shared this study with recology, and they're okay with this design. Fault study. So, this site is actually indicated in the Alcus Priolo Fault Zone, and the applicant conducted a fault study in 2018 and confirmed that the Napa Fault is not located within the property lines. The project site is feasible for development from a geological perspective, so there's a- So there's a there's a fault study included in the staff report for this. And that's it for the design. We did a lot of outreach for this project. The applicant themselves had done some outreach in 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 the earlier stages of this project. I think we had over twenty-five letters responded in the staff report. So we people know about this project and and we're trying our best to to respond to the questions that they had. So that's all I have. The the application include included a sequo adendum to the Broadway District Plan Environmental Report. And the addendum showed that there were no substantial changes with this project. Staff's recommendation is to approve this project, but the applicant has requested a continuance until the April meeting. So I'm sure you have lots of questions, and that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. He for the great presentation. Is the applicant here?
Don't believe so, not yet.
Commissioners, I want to open up for questions. Do you have any questions for Mr. He? Commissioner Abalon?
Thank you for your presentation. It was very concise and very detailed. I also liked that final slide that showed the amount of public outreach that went out to to get feedback. My my question is one of parking. You you went through concisely discussing parking. But my question is, will there be adequate ADA parking slots for the residents that will live in in this development?
Well, there will be ADA, there's an ADA parking spot for like getting into the rec center. And but for each of the individual units, I think that's something that they will have to work on for the construction permits. But Director Cooper, do you have some thoughts on that, too?
Right. Well, Commissioner Abalon, accessibility is, there are different standards depending upon whether it's sold as a condominium or as an apartment. And so at some point, the applicant would need to choose which way they're going. There is a condition of approval that requires an accessibility study, regardless of whether they're condominiums or apartments. And that would address the accessibility issues you're referring to and and others as well that go with the building code.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Plummer?
Thank you. And I I also like, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. My my question, and and this may be more for the developer, but I'm asking, is the egress and ingress of the property itself. There's only one way in and one way out for the residents besides the emergency vehicle access point. I could see that potentially posing a problem if anything happens to that particular entrance coming in and out of that. Is there any concerns from the city other than? I mean, I think most properties and residential properties, at least from the from where I work at and what we have to deal with, we also have to deal with separate entrances and exits besides just the emergency vehicle access.
Well, well, this was, the the fire access plan was reviewed by a fire district. And ultimately, they had no problems with what they presented. In addition to the EVA and the entry on Crawford, the houses facing Crawford and the houses facing Highway twenty-nine, they have direct access to the sidewalk. So I don't know if that answers the question, but I can also pass that as a question.
Right, and I could add on to that, Commissioner Plummer. We've had several recent projects. There was one in Watson Ranch, Lot Seven. That one also has a single point of ingress and egress. And the another one prior to that is the Promontory, also in Watson Ranch. And that one has two hundred and nineteen units. There's a condition of approval that they can't build something more, I think around two hundred. So there are there are fire standards for the number of units you can build before a second vehicle access for the residents needs to be provided. And and so the hundred units here is within the threshold that allows for one entrance and exit. And I mentioned there are a couple of recent projects that also have one entrance and exit, one that will have it entirely, and another one where they have a limit on the number of homes before they need to provide a second entrance.
I appreciate the explanation. I do have another question concerning overflow of parking. Do we know on Crawford Way specifically the width of 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 that road? Because I'm under the assumption, knowing that we have another condo residential thing across the way. I don't know exactly what it's called, but there's tons of overflow parking. Sixteen guest spots is not going to be enough for a hundred units there. So therefore, we can assume there's going to be overflow parking on Crawford Way and/or probably in addition to in the residential area or across the way in the plaza area as well, too. So I guess the concerns I'm just asking, has that been addressed as far as the width of the road and allowing traffic to flow with additional parking that will likely happen on on Crawford?
I think the width of the street is better answered by the Public Works Director of Crawford.
Yes, I'm sure our public, we're very happy to have Erica Smithies am on here tonight, Public Works Director who knows all about road widths. While she's coming up, I I think we're all in agreement. I think everyone in this room, I don't think anyone is here from the state of California, doesn't like the state rules that allow residential projects that include affordable housing to provide less parking than the city code. The Village of Vintage Ranch meets the city code. Perhaps the tenants there choose not to use their garages. But none of us are happy, I think, here about the prospect of residential projects providing less parking than our code. But it is a state law and it's unfortunate. It can't be changed because it's a state law. I think the the consolation is, as William pointed out, state law would say they could build a hundred and fifty spaces and they're providing much more than that. Only nine less than what our code would require. So it's the best we can get, I suppose, under a situation where state law allows the applicant the right to provide less parking than the code.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Erica Alma Smithies, Public Works Director. As far as the question, I had not look up the the width of the road before I came here this evening. Looking at a quick Google Earth view, there is parking allowed on the north side. That's the westbound as you come off of twenty-nine. Not many people use that. I don't know how many times a day you drive through there. I hardly ever see anyone. There's only two shown on Google Earth, the current imagery. That leaves you, it leaves me to believe that that it is an underutilized street for parking. The south side is narrow. It looks like only a lane width. So I without having the plans in front of my face, see what the off-site improvements, another sidewalk included. I don't believe it allowed for parking on street on that side. But you know, that that's where they could park now and no one is parking on that side. So there will be traffic calming improvements as shared with the proposed, the conditions. It's a raised crosswalk table, similar to what would be, that's been gone in on Marcus Way and Rolling Hills Drive, and that is planned also at Melvin. So with that, I have any more questions?
And Commissioner Plummer, I think parking on the south side adjacent to the apartments would not be allowed because there is a class-two bike lane striped next to that.
Thank you. There you go. Was there parking still allowed on the north side? I I don't have that at the top of my head.
I believe there is.
Okay. All right.
I did have one. Oh, okay, if it's related.
Yeah, so regarding everyone's favorite issue of parking, I was wondering, based on like some public comments I saw and my own reading of the plan, you know, it seems, I understand that the current parking plan is greater than what the state minimum would be. It also seems like this, the location of this development would be poised to encourage lower levels of car ownership because it is near the bus stop that goes to Bart. It's near, it's within walking distance of local amenities, shops, the plaza, all of that. And you know, that's great if we can encourage fewer vehicle trips. Obviously, that helps reduce VMT, helps with climate change, all of that. But it did look like actual bike parking onsite is quite low. I understand that in theory, someone could park their bike in the garage, but we all know that a lot of people use garages for a wide variety of things. And so I wondered if it would be possible to discuss with the developer the possibility of adding more designated bike parking as an additional measure to encourage other modes of transportation so that maybe some of those units are only one-car households instead of two. You know, if people are able to have other options, they might choose to own fewer vehicles.
Yeah, thank you for the question. This is a a topic that the the Napa County Bike Coalition has brought up in the comments. And what we found out is that there may be new like building, California Building Code legislation that will come up that requires more bike parking than than what's required now, and they'll have to comply with that. So this is, you know, if if they move fast, and then they will not be subject to that new rule. But if if they wait, then they might have to change their plans and add more bike parking. But I'll let Director Cooper, if he wants to add to that.
All right. Commissioner Goss, I think I think Mr. He answered it correctly. The zoning code requires the eight bicycle parking spaces. We did have a conversation between the applicant and the Napa Valley Bicycle Coalition. And the applicant did not agree to add more parking. Because the code only allows eight, there is no way to compel the applicant to provide more. But as Mr. He pointed out, there is a new building code that will be approved statewide effective January first of twenty twenty-six. So if you're building a a housing project, that's kind of around the corner. The rules are that if you have your building permit application complete before January first, then you're subject to the current rules. But if you submit your building permit application or it's not complete until after January first, then you're subject to the new rules. So as he pointed out, if the applicant is gets their approval and they move forward with their building permits, then they're subject to today's rules. If they're slow and they submit their permits and they become complete after January first, it looks as if the new building code would require more more parking, more bicycle parking. I think the ratio is something in the neighborhood of of two spaces per unit, or there is much more than eight, for sure. So I guess the race is on.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the the number of units per acre at twenty, the waiver to go slightly higher on that based on the affordability of units in there. So that took us from eighty-seven to one oh five, or eighty-six to one oh five-ish, correct? Which leaves about eighteen to nineteen affordable units. Is that correct? If that if that would be the number, right? Going from eighty-seven and then that fifteen percent or wherever that percentage was would be X amount of affordable units, correct?
It's not a direct proportional like that. I think the state code has a a whole table of how much affordability you provide and how much density that you'll get. And according to the the math, it it works out that they will get up to a hundred and five units for the fifteen units of affordable that they're providing. But I also think that it's it's based on the the base units, right?
Well, planners aren't the best at math.
Because that's my que- my question is, if 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 it's based on the number of of eighty-seven, right, the twenty to twenty-four, right, that's been moved up and we say conditionally they get one oh five, even though they scaled back to a hundred, that would equate to a number of affordable units, correct? Or no?
The the way it works is there there are some complicated tables. But the simplest way to describe it is if they provide five percent of the units affordable to very low income, then they're entitled to a twenty percent, is that correct? Density bonus. They aren't actually using all of their twenty percent bonus, they're using something less than that because doing a hundred units. If you build a hundred units, then our zoning code would say you need to provide, if it's apartments, fifteen percent of them affordable at those different three tiers. Or if it's ownership, then it's ten percent. So our zoning code applies requirements for affordability on the total number of units. And the state law says if five percent of them are very low, then you get a density bonus. So there's kind of different ways of looking at it. Sort of the before picture with what the zoning allows for density, five percent of those gets you twenty percent.
Thank you.
And then once you're there, then we apply our ratios.
So so if I'm hearing you correctly, that that the number is not set until they choose whether they're going to be apartments or condominiums?
Right, the inclusionary amount, the affordable requirements for the city is set when we know how many units they are proposing.
Got it, so we don't have that number until they are trying to to arrive at a number of affordable units that we could anticipate, then, so we won't know that.
Right, it's fifteen percent if they're if they're apartments or ten percent if it's ownership. And the big asterisk to that is with rising costs. And example would would be even the Oath Hill Apartments. They had economists, probably because of the hillside condition, makes it very expensive to build it with all the retaining walls and the grading. The economist for the Oath Hill Project concluded that if the city required affordable housing with that project, it would make it too expensive to build. Because affordable housing is subsidized housing. So the builder isn't getting, you know, the full value of a market rate unit for those units. They're subsidized. So when you add that extra cost burden to the project, this in the Oath Hill context with the hills and all the grading and such, it would make the project infeasible. Today, we have different conditions and with with inflation. Back in in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when the Oath Hill was being considered, you know, that was before we had that burst of inflation after COVID. And so we've had several years of inflation and a lot of builders are saying those costs are going up. We haven't had a study from the applicant on this project concluding that providing onsite affordable units would be infeasible, but I wouldn't be surprised if we did. And if we do, state law says you have to consider alternatives because we don't want to stop projects from happening because our affordable requirements are making them too expensive. So you have to look at different ways to provide affordable housing. And the simplest way that we have is an inclusionary housing fee. There are other options, too, but that's the one that tends to be the easiest one to come up with.
Thank you.
One more thing I want to add is our housing element, this project includes two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. It's unusual for apartments to have three bedrooms. So if you have an affordable three-bedroom unit, even the the housing element today acknowledges that's a a really valuable thing because there are very few rental units available for families. And so there is even, just from the outset, room for for discussion about potentially reducing the overall affordable requirement if those units are three-bedroom units, just because it's so hard to find rental units with that have three bedrooms. So there's a lot of discussion to have over how the affordability is actually done, which is why it's a condition of approval that kind of gets worked out when they're about ready to build the project.
And I have one more question, if you don't mind. On slide fourteen, could you could you bring that up? So my question is, and this is, this is actual north, southeast, west, is that right?
That's right, yeah.
So on the western side, I see there's a a sidewalk or whatever that is. Do we know the setback from the fence line there? Because that's a residential property just to the left of that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we know the setback distance, the size of that sidewalk?
Size of the sidewalk is approximately five feet.
Five feet.
And then the building to the fence is at least ten feet.
At least ten feet. And then the the fence height, as as I read, is only six feet, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
I think we've heard public comment from residents before about their concerns of having balconies facing into backyards and looking at that. I think there needs to, you know, we need to take a look at this side of the design and what those visible sightlines look like into residential properties. I think that would be something I want to make sure we're voicing, and that's specifically to the western side of the development. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Goss?
Turning on my mic helps. So my next question was also regarding this slide and the landscaping plan laid out in this proposal. The species of plants mentioned by name in the proposal were all, were at least primarily ornamental introduced species. They were not, they're not native to this region. And I did see in public comments that this issue of native plantings had been raised, and it was acknowledged that the city cannot compel the developer to include more native plantings, and I understand that. I would still love if they would more, consider it more seriously. In particular, I noticed that one of the tree species suggested is an Oklahoma redbud. There is a California redbud that looks incredibly similar. It is a native species. It's used regularly in landscaping for public works projects or public state government projects in public right-of-way. It grows well in this area. It's a native species. It looks very similar aesthetically to the Oklahoma redbud, and it ultimately requires less water over its lifetime, so it would be a reasonable choice as far as resources required to grow it, and it's how hardy it is in this environment. Again, this is more of a comment. I understand that the city can't compel the developer to include this, but I would love to be able to ask the developer about that directly, but they are not here, so you, Mr. He, get my comment instead.
I'll pass it on.
Yeah. That just stuck out to me as like a really clear alternative that could be used instead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Commissioner Altman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, William, for the presentation. I got a variety of things, some of which have already been touched on and some have not. I'll start with what our vice chair came up with about the entry and exit access. That's always been a bugaboo of mine. And, you know, putting it bluntly, my concern isn't so much whether the fire department thinks they can get a fire truck in and out easily enough to deal with a fire situation. My concern is a bigger concern in terms of public safety in the event of a bigger event, whether it be an unexpected earthquake, because again, we didn't really know a whole heck of a lot about the West Napa Fault until we had a quake on the West Napa Fault. So while I know they've done studies and whatnot, and it doesn't appear that there's an issue, we don't know. And my concern, anytime you've got less than two access points, is if there's a quake and if the road is impassable, how do people get out? Or are you trapping the 100 residents because the driveway exit is now impassable? And that's not a fire department. That's not, that's not a, okay, there's a fire, what do we do? That's a bigger safety hazard, safety issue. And I'm really disappointed that the applicant is not here to address questions and chose not to show. And I think it's really poor form on their part, and I will tell you, you know, without having answers to questions, I for one am not prepared to consider moving forward with this. So, I mean, it's, I need, I need answers. And as I said, I've got some other questions and comments, but I needed to get that on the record to begin with. An area that hasn't been touched on that is really important to me is, you showed up, it was slide 20. If you can bring that one up. Yeah, page 20. Broadway District Specific Plan Subarea Development Transfer. This is a local-serving mixed-use sub-band, or whatever we want to call it, within the We're going to exceed the number of units on a residential, not a mixed-use, which means we then have no local-serving mixed-use available, unless we can get additional transfers within other areas. I think that this is, you know, and I know this isn't the question before us, but I think it's really critical to point it out. I think that this project doesn't fit the zoning. If you want to put this in a, you know, residential zoned area, okay, that's what it's zoned for. I still have questions about the egress and entry and other issues, but I think taking our local-serving mixed-use and dedicating it to a residential property makes no sense from the city's perspective. I think that it is a really bad call, because given the location, and we heard comments earlier, it's because it's right next to a shopping center, there's greater accessibility, there's more ability for bicycling and other modes of transport rather than automobiles. We're giving that all up. That's what local-serving mixed-use really plays on, is having the ability to be able to use public transit, be able to, I mean, it's why when you look at big cities, mixed-use is usually near transit zones. So here, we're taking our, and I believe it's the only mixed-use zone that we have, and we're making it residential. I don't get it. I mean, it makes no sense to me.
It's duly noted.
I mean, and again, so that's one of my questions actually for the developer. I'd like the developer to answer. You know, don't they understand what this is and why this was zoned this way? And why is their proposal for something that does not fit what the zoning is? Now, granted, allowances are permissible, and that's what they're looking for, and they're looking to take advantage of all of the state-permitted allowances, and they're looking to, you know, do all of this. I just, from our standpoint as a community, I don't think this project makes a whole heck of a lot of sense. Now that said, I think it's a lovely project in a lot of regards. I think the architecture is nice. I think, I love the fact that they will underground the utilities, which is something I'm a big advocate of. As you guys know, you've heard me on that subject. But I just, I just have some major, major concerns, and, you know, I think the site design is inappropriate, basically. So that's, that's kind of my comments. That's what I've got at this point, so thank you.
William, could you show a slide that shows the districts? I mean, this isn't the only mixed-use location. There is, the local-serving mixed-use is located at, that's, it was on the east side of Highway 29. We have this one here. I think Donaldson Way is another one. There is, there isn't a lot, but it is, but there are other locations. And your point is well taken that it's nice to have mixed-use. I think we all would like to see that. The zoning does today allow the uses that's proposed, and it's perfectly fine to have a perspective that you wish the zoning was different, but today, the zoning allows what is proposed. And it's perfectly fine to feel differently.
Commissioner Goss? Oh, Commissioner Abalon, sorry.
I also have to share, I'm a little disappointed as well that the developer isn't here, and I kind of just want to piggyback on some of the concerns and comments from my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Goss went into real detail when it came to the shrubs and the trees, and I don't have your biology expertise, but those were one of my questions and concerns, too, about will the existing trees and shrubs prevent or help, help protect the privacy of the neighbors in that area? Because that was one of the concerns in some of our previous meetings, that people that live along the neighborhood were very concerned that as people are on their balcony, they could perhaps see into their backyards or their front yard. So I wanted to make sure that we addressed that. And I'm going to agree with Commissioner Plummer. I was very much concerned when I looked at slide 14, which is more of a colorful graphic. And again, going to slide 5, when, was it slide 5? Yeah, yes, when it talks about the entrance and exit of the, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong. The entrance and exit of possible emergency vehicles. While the fire, fire truck can go in, you know, but can they make some sort of U-turn? And I'm in agreement, too. Should there be an emergency, you've got a lot of residences trying to get out of two different entry points. I just don't see that happening. One, that's right, one entry point, you're correct. Those were my comments.
Chair and commission members, I think one thing to note, you know, the applicant isn't here, but under either the Housing Accountability Act or our own standards with respect to the design permit that's at issue, the standard's substantial evidence. And certainly, there's substantial evidence in the staff presentation, but, you know, I'm counting roughly, there are, I think, eight questions that would be only answerable by the applicant. And because of that, and in order to ensure due process in the hearing and the opportunity to establish substantial evidence, one way or another on these issues that you raised, the matter has to be continued. Certainly, the questions presented would be forwarded to the applicant. But I think in the context of the balance of this hearing, if there's public comment, the standards involved for an eventual decision both require substantial evidence, and that, in our advice would be, that can only be achieved after the applicant has a chance to respond. So in essence, it's a continuance. I guess it's the jury. It would be, you know, there would be a continuance as a matter of law, so. But, you know, I think for the balance of the procedure, should ascertain if there are any more questions from the commission, and if there's public comment or questions, that would also be appropriate.
Thank you, Attorney Ross. I do have two questions and one to add to your list of eight. The first one is, are the garage parking that's going to be available, are they going to be EV-ready?
I don't have the answer to that, but I think EV is also, is also something that's part of the California Building Code soon, so I'll find out and get back to you for that question.
I believe when I read through the documents, it said that part of the condition was that it had to be EV-plugged and ready.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. And my other question is, do we know why the applicant is not here?
You know, prior-
Or I'm sorry, do we know why the applicant is asking for a continuance?
Prior to the staff report being issued, I've contacted him to explain the Housing Crisis Act and how, you know, we need to have this meeting to bring this project forward. And his response is he's still working with his internal staff and looking through the financial numbers for the project.
Thank you. If there are no other commissioner questions, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Wait, please, please go up. Allow me to call you, please. We have... No, please go up, Mr. Thomas. If there's anybody else in the room who would like to make a comment on this item, please fill out a speaker card and bring it up.
Great. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Philip Thomas. I live here in American Canyon, and I got a couple of comments about the project. I think the first comment I have is, are they planning on getting the entitlements and then selling the project, or will they build it out and develop it themselves? That's the first comment. Second comment is, what is the experience of this group developing the property? We're not talking about building a duplex here. We're talking about building a very big project, and I hope they have the financial acumen and ability to see the project through. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment on this item? Beth, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Fran Lemos. I'd like to make sure that the people, there's two houses in that area, and I agree with you, they need to have some kind of protection. So maybe those trees could be a barrier or something. I don't know. It just seems like they shouldn't be looking down in their backyards, because I'd like to see, make sure that that's kind of corrected. And it looks like a nice project. I, I hope that one way in and one way out is not a problem. And I like the overpass that goes to the Canyon Plaza. So if they can make sure that the neighbors are protected, it would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Beth Marcus. I was going to fill out a card, but by the time I did it, it would be too late. I just want to congratulate all of the new commissioners. You guys are like rock solid. I mean, for a project like this, and you're here, I mean, your very first meeting was about the thing over there, and now you got this. So you guys are doing a great job, asking a lot of great questions and everything. I think the project looks very nice. I'm sorry, Bren, I just have to comment about Melvin Road. I mean, you guys learned a lot from that project. It's too late now for my street, but it looks very nice, pretty much like Oak Hill, I think. So it's a very attractive-looking building or, you know, complex. The other thing is, I know we're talking about the traffic and everything and parking. The only time that would really be a parking is there is, sometimes we have events in the plaza, and people park out there, so I don't know, but that's not all the time. And the other thing is, for those who are going on Crawford onto the highway, is there an anticipation, I know we're talking about roundabouts, or if there would potentially be a red light there? Or could you have another right lane that goes down and it goes, I don't know how to explain it? Yeah, like where you go, yeah, where you can merge back onto the road or something. I know it's probably an Erica question, but that's just some comments, but otherwise, I think it looks very nice. Just glad I don't live next to them. Great job, you guys.
Thank you, Beth.
Yes. Chair Muhammad, I think our Public Works Director could describe what may be in store for the Crawford Way, Highway 29 intersection. I know the plans are still somewhat in putty, but I think the options-
I know the plans are still somewhat in putty, but I think the options are being narrowed. Definitely not. It's a serious putty.
Good evening again. Eric Altman Smithy is Public Works Director. As far as the improvements plan for Highway 29, the corridor improvements, some of you that are very active and watch a lot of the meetings and come to the meetings, there is a project on Highway 29 that's currently in the preliminary engineering and environmental review with between Caltrans, Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and the City of American Canyon as a very important stakeholder. The project will, will help build the Broadway specific plan out as far as the Class Ones on either side of the road, and the needed, much needed improvements at the intersections. The two alternatives right now are either the bus transit, quick pass lanes with still signals all through Napa Junction all the way to American Canyon Road. The second alternative, which seems to be the most viable, because people, as we know, still runs, you know, still the major injuries are when you run intersection lights. So the roundabouts are still probably the more viable, most safe for everyone. It includes the rapid reflective beacon crossings with the roundabouts will have the crosswalk on approaches, all directions, the bulb outs at the needed intersections, including Crawford Way. And then there will still be a signal down at American Canyon Road, because it's such a confined space with the PG&E substation and the railroad crossing. You don't have much room to make sure you can have adequate space for the proper sized roundabout. So I'm open to hear more questions on that, but there will be improvements, multimodal improvements, complete streets at those intersections that one of those projects gets completed. Napa Valley Transportation Authority is taking the lead on that. And while I'm up here, I'll give the plug, that we're planning on a public workshop in the HR annex downstairs in the City Hall on April 30th. I believe the time will be at six o'clock, so there'll be more to come on that with public outreach through our communications team and Napa Valley Transportation Authority and probably Caltrans. So it'll be blasted in all directions when that meeting is scheduled, confirmed with the location. There'll be more workshops as it goes. So it'll be actually an active workshop where you're moving around from station to station, so. More than you wanted to ask right now, right?
I've got one quick question.
Okay.
Is there any timeline? Any, like, is this going to happen in five years, in 35 years, in six months?
The goal is to get under construction in five years or less. So you have the PAED, they call it, which is the Preliminary Engineering and Environmental, will take another 18 months. It's been underway for approximately six months. Kim Lee Horn is the consultant on the team, the prime. The, following that, we'll need funding to start financing the right-of-way acquisition needed, starting the Rule 28, 2B project with undergrounding the utilities that are still needing to be underground, and then finding the funding for full construction. So leveraging that between our new Measure U, thank you to the voters who voted to get that passed, bonding that to leverage grant funds and other funds as we can.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind too, it's just more of a general question. Love the roundabout ideas, by the way, I think it's fantastic. My concern, and maybe you can give me some insight, or maybe I need to wait for the workshop, is pedestrian crossings. Has there been any thought to do a pedestrian overpass crossing versus a street crossing? Because there's still so much pedestrian accidents that happen on that road regardless of roundabouts or not.
That's still being discussed, even at City Council level, so it's not a complete bygone idea, so stay tuned.
Are there any other public comments?
Is there anyone? Okay.
I just wanted to take a quick look. Is that a park? Is there going to be a park or any kind of space for the kids? Yeah? Okay, that's what I, I couldn't see from the other, from the back.
Anybody on Zoom?
There is no one on Zoom. Is there anyone else in the room that, who has not had a chance to speak, who would like to make comment on this item? So please go up and state your name, and then if you could fill out a speaker card afterwards, yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Demetria Thomas, and my husband Philip and I, we own the property right next door. I'm looking at this layout. Do you see where the entry line is coming in? What if those two units or the two strips there are back to back, and there's an opening for access there, and another opening for access on the opposite side? If they flip things around? I don't know if that's a workable idea, but that would help for two entries. That's it.
Thank you, Demetria.
Okay, there's no one on Zoom?
So then I'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners, do we have a motion to?
Yes, I will make a motion that we continue this item, the Crawford Way Multifamily Project Design Permit Hearing, until our next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes, just one second. Commissioner Marilyn Abelon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Chair Davet Mohammed?
Aye.
Next on the agenda. Next we have the General Plan. Director Cooper?
Hold on.
The benefit of testing ahead of time. Well, good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and wanted to congratulate you on being the first Planning Commission in 31 years, back again to math, to consider the comprehensive General Plan. I'm really pleased tonight to also welcome our consultant team representatives. We have Gianna Meschi, you, she was here in the fall from Rincon Consultants, environmental planner, and Brent Gibbons with Mintier Harnish. So we're really happy to have them here, and we've been working on this project for a long time, and just very pleased to bring a conclusion to you. Okay, so what is a General Plan? The General Plan is, it's a very complicated detailed document that spells out how the city will develop over long term, 20 to 30 years. And you've probably heard of the zoning ordinance, we talk a lot about that, but we have a lot of other development regulations, and we also have public improvements. I think on your upcoming agenda is confirming that the city's capital improvement plan is consistent with the General Plan. All of the decisions that are made with the way in which development happens in town has to be consistent with the General Plan. And because the General Plan has covered so many different topics, they need to work together. No one of them supersedes the others, but they have to work in concert. And so since our General Plan was initially adopted in 1994, and it's been updated since then, it's not all updated. So this is a refresh of everything to get it all talking the same language, in a sense, and working together. And so what we have before you tonight is, is the product of that, the technical General Plan update. Along with the General Plan, we have an environmental impact report, which evaluates the future development in the city, and provides mitigation measures and a path forward for development in the city. So this was never done before, and so each project that comes along since then has to have, to do its own environmental review. Having a programmatic approach really helps. It's been done in Watson Ranch, and it really helps there, also the Broadway District, but there are other areas of the city where development happens. And so having an environmental impact report cover everything really helps streamline the way in which environmental review will go forward for the rest of the city in the long term. One of the things that, that we all appreciate about our City Council and in our Planning Commission is their high achieving people. So it takes a while to update the General Plan, but there are important priorities that need to be dealt with. And so as we've been updating the General Plan, we've also been working in updating the General Plan for specific areas, and that's really helped address a lot of the issues that you might look at, at a normal garden variety General Plan update, where they save everything to the end, and it's a big bang with all the change. A lot of it has been addressed along the way, and the controversy and the dialogue, we took care of that. And so the General Plan we have before you is really a completion of a larger process that's been going on for years. So a lot has already been done, and, and we're kind of here to see the finish. One of the other little surprises at the end was the update from our friends to the north. Napa County updated its Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. It was approved in December, just last year. And the airport, we all know, is not that far from us, it's in fact borders us immediately to the north, and it has these sort of constant, these circles that go around it that reflect limitations on land use as you get closer to the airport. It's more restrictive, less restrictive further out. And so we're actually today in Zone E of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. You might not have known that, but E is actually a pretty good zone, it's the least zone. D is just north of Wetlands Edge and Eucalyptus, and it kind of arcs to the northeast, goes over Oak Hill, cuts through right north of Tractor Supply, and continues on. So that's a noise impact area under the old plan, and housing wasn't allowed up there, it was incompatible. So there's been a change to that, but it does influence the city and the way we react to that. State law says that when there is a new airport compatibility plan, the city has six months to update its General Plan to conform with the new plan. So that doesn't leave us a lot of time, but I guess in some ways it's beneficial, because we're, happen to be updating our plan anyway. So we just kind of folded that in. It's a little bonus. Another component that we'd like to take care of is, there are some land use changes, I'll have a slide for that, and so we've also updated our zoning so that it's consistent with the General Plan. A lot of cities, they do the General Plan, they come back later and argue about the zoning, but we're going to kind of take care of it all at once, when bundled. So that's kind of the overview of, of what we're here to talk about tonight. One of the key issues that when you're working on a General Plan is, okay, it's, there's a geography, there's a geographical area that we're studying, and Planning Law, which is what largely drives the General Plan update, says, any area that the city has an interest in, in one way or another, should be included in your General Plan geographical area. And so the outer boundary of our geographical area is the city's water service area. The water service area predates the city, and so what makes it important is that even though it's outside the city, land uses that need water, what doesn't, needs to get that water from the city. So the city has influence over water service well outside the city's boundary, which is actually a pretty important role. And so it's not something that we deal with a whole lot day to day, but it is still a very important aspect of cities, the way it operates. As we kind of shrink down a little lower, there's another boundary around the city, a little tighter to our, our boundary, called the urban limit line. Back in 2008, the city and the county reached consensus on what might be a logical boundary for the cities, for the city itself. And so this is a contract between the city and the county, and it was reinforced with an initiative that passed the residents. So that's an important boundary as well. Moving in again, there is another term called the sphere of influence. I know that might kind of sound like a movie, but it's actually a state term for the state of California, and what the state of California says is, the area that's in your sphere of influence is logical to add into the city's corporate boundary in the relatively short term. And so we have a little area here around our city that's in the sphere of influence. And then finally, we were left with the city's corporate boundary, an area that we know and love. So all of these different areas here have a role for the city, and they all differ a little bit, but they're all important. So I have here a picture of the city's land use map. Sometimes people see an open field, and they think, ah, it's an open field, it must be open space, because it's open. But it more likely not, it's owned by somebody, and they have plans to use it for something in the future. So the General Plan allocates a land use to all of the land that is in our sphere of influence and city corporate boundary. And the property owner has expectations to use their land in accordance with the General Plan. And so we have that there. You've probably noticed this very brightly colored dashed area in the northeast side with the Hess Laird property. This property is in Napa County, and it is beyond our urban limit line. It's in our water service area, but it's beyond the urban limit line, the sphere of influence and the city limit. And so this property actually has an application recently approved by the county for industrial development. And so two years ago, the City Council directed staff to include that property as a prospective amendment to our urban limit line. And so it is highlighted in the General Plan and in the environmental impact report as a study area. So the idea would be, it would be included in the urban limit line, but, but we can't do that now, because there's an initiative that says it's somewhere else. So, but we do need to start thinking about that. These things are complicated decisions to make, they take some time, and, and so it's highlighted as a priority, once the General Plan is adopted, to, to have conversations with the county about including that in our urban limit line. I'd mentioned that there's some land use changes. All of the more difficult and complicated ones have already been accomplished, so that kind of leaves us some cleanup. And so what we have here is, there are some creeks and parks today that have zoning and general plan designations, that's commercial or residential. Probably in the beginning, when an area was being planned, it all had residential zoning, and out of that, they carved out the parks and the schools and the creeks, and they didn't do anything about the underlying zoning. And so we're just going to clean that up. The schools are a public use, and so it will be changed to public. The creeks are an open space use, so that's what they'll be changed. Parks as well are a public use. So these are all just kind of cleaning things up so they make sense, and we have compatibility between the General Plan and the zoning, and what's actually happening on the ground that is going to be there indefinitely, as far as we know. So that's largely what we're left with, which is, which is kind of nice. You might notice up here on the upper right, we have some color changes. That's the area in Watson and Paoli Loop. Back when we were beginning this in 2022, we didn't know it was like a horse race. Is the Paoli Watson project going to go forward, or the General Plan, who's going to win? The Paoli Watson won. So that land use has been changed, and so it's, it's kind of there to remind us how much we've gotten done. Part of the General Plan that's, gets a lot of conversation is mobility. Part of the general plan that gets a lot of conversation is mobility. And roadways, of course, are expensive, difficult facilities to build. And so we have in dashed lines here, some roadway extensions. We have Rio Del Mar, which east, which is largely already built. So we can congratulate ourselves for that. New Road is, follows Watson Ranch all the way up to Green Island Road. Some of that has been constructed, so we're moving forward with that. It also shows that, a little hard to see because of the patterns, directly north through the Hess Laird to connect to South Kelly Road. So that's kind of referred to as the east side connector and provides a parallel transit route east of Highway 29. There is also a plan for the west side connector and there was a subcommittee that we had for a couple of years around 2020 to 2021. And the subcommittee approached the council with an alternative they supported. And at the time, the council acknowledged support, which is something less than an adoption. They were like, we think that's a good idea. But, but that's already four years ago. Along with roadway, of course, we have multimodal, we're very concerned about. Today, we have a bicycle master plan. It was adopted into the general plan in 2020 and that plan is staying put. So it's bringing brought forward, we're not changing that. And along with that, there is a pedestrian master plan that was approved in 2017 and that too was adopted into the general plan and is staying there. The Napa Valley Transportation Authority is today working on a replacement plan for both those things. They're calling it the active transportation plan. So we're participating in that and when NVTA completes it, we'll be bringing it to the planning commission to be included in the general plan to replace the older bicycle and pedestrian plan in the general plan. So we're looking forward to that. But that's a little ways out now because they've just started working on it. And then our public works director referred to the Highway 29 Project Initiation Environmental Document. Did I get it right? Because Highway 29 is owned by the state of California. The city does not own it, we do not control it. We have to work with them and they have complicated protocols because they're all engineers. And so we're working our way through that. And we're very excited about it. Some new issues in the general plan that wasn't there before, and that is wildfire mitigation, we're very concerned, and that's a good thing to be concerned about. And, and so there are new policies in the general plan that speak to wildfire mitigation. I'd mentioned the new airport land use compatibility plan. Here is a simplified map. Beth gets my humor. One of the things that I can say about the new plan is I'd mentioned Zone D, which is our arcs across our northern part of the city. The plan there didn't allow residential uses. And through their process, the county has seen fit to allow residential uses into the D zone. And so it does offer some new opportunities that didn't exist. Well, they did exist through a process where the council can overrule it, but that's not a good thing. It's not a nice thing to do. They don't like that. So we're all getting together and, and there's some new opportunities now in the D zone. And if, if we could dissect this map, you'd see that. And it's being incorporated into the general plan. We've done a lot of outreach over the years. You can see from the face masks that we've been doing it a long time. And so we're pretty excited about that. We try to get the word out. I know that talking about a general plan isn't probably foremost on most people's minds, but we do our best. I'd mentioned that there's a number of more difficult things that have already been done and, which is great because we're not handling them all at once now. And so among them is a fuel station moratorium. So back when this was being considered around 2021, the general plan had no policies about climate change because it's from 1994. And like I mentioned, our ordinances need to be consistent with the general plan. And so putting a moratorium on gasoline powered fuel stations has a hook into climate change. And so in order for us to have a legitimate ordinance, the general plan has to talk about that. So we did amend the general plan to incorporate climate change policies and therefore that enabled a fuel station moratorium to go forward because now we've, we've created this connection between our ordinance and our general plan. So, so that's accomplished. The Oath Hill Residential Project, it's well on its way under construction today. It had industrial general plan and zoning before. And around 2021, that was amended to allow the housing that you see under construction today. So that was a nice accomplishment. It was, it was a lot of work. I know William was the project manager and I think this project singly had the most number of resolutions for the planning commission to go through of any in our history. It was, it was a big project. Furthermore, there is a little piece of it that was in Zone D in the airport plan and it had to have an airport land use compatibility overrule because they deemed it incompatible. And so it had to go to the council for an overrule. It was a big shemozzle, but I think at the end of the day, it enabled the county to see fit to update their plan because it really was out of date. So we have a lot to be thankful for with this being behind us. I mentioned the Paoli Watson, general plan amendment, pre-zoning and annexation. The environmental review for that is subject to a lawsuit, but Bill Ross's capable team is making progress and someday it will be behind us. But the hard, a lot of the hard work of doing the, there was an environmental impact report for that, general plan amendment, zone change, airport land use commission review, all of these things take a lot of time. Who can forget the housing element? So every jurisdiction in the Bay Area, all 120 of them, 400, there's a lot of them anyway, 100 of them, 100 plus, all have to update their housing element in accordance with the state's rules. It's, it's the single element in the general plan that gets the most scrutiny from the state of California and it also has to be approved by them. So they had provided us this incredibly tight timeframe, reaching out to everybody we could with a lot of policies and a lot of effort. And there are many cities that still don't have their housing element certified. But we do and that was a lot of work to get done and it was, we're glad it's behind us. And we bringing you all the time, implementation programs with subsequent zone changes and policy updates and things to help fulfill our efforts to further housing in American Canyon. I've mentioned the west side connector. We had a subcommittee specifically looking at that. You know, we have the east side connector, we don't have one on the west side. And so we have the recommended steering committee, subcommittee here. And I'm sure it will be discussed also at the council level about whether this is an idea that they continue to support. There's another policy that we talked, touched on tonight called vehicle miles traveled. It is intended to be part of our general plan, but we've already taken care of it. The idea is that we, most of us drive by ourselves in an automobile and when we do, it creates traffic congestion and air pollution. And so if we can both drive less and add more people to each vehicle, then you reduce the overall miles you travel to get around. And so that policy was adopted and it's a great component that we have to our general plan. And I'm mercifully down to our last slide, our schedule. We have an aggressive schedule coming up tonight, of course. Here we are on March 27. Next week, we're looking forward to going to the Open Space and Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission on April 2nd. They will make a recommendation to the city council. The Parks and Community Services Commission, April 10. We're having a workshop with the council on tax day, so hopefully you won't be procrastinating and can come. Looking forward to that. And then we'll be visiting our friends at the Airport Land Use Commission. I did have a, city attorney and I met with the staff planner and shared our plans to make our plan consistent with their plan. We got smiles, so I'm encouraged. So I'm feeling good. And adoption on May 20. And if you have any questions on this part of our, I should have mentioned, this part of our presentation, glad to take those calls. Gianna has an overview for you on the general plan that I promise is not as long as this.
Alrighty, so my name is Gianna Meskey. I'm here on behalf of Ringcon Consultants. We supported American Canyon with preparing the environmental impact report for this project. So here is a brief overview of what I will be presenting on today. And Brent was very kind and already introduced everybody, so I won't bother with that again. And I'll jump right into CEQA and environmental review. So to give a little bit of background, the general plan is required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, as I will be referring to it. So to start that process, the city determined that a program EIR was necessary to evaluate the impacts of the general plan. And the draft EIR serves to provide an avenue for analyzing the impacts of the project and disclosing those impacts to the public. It also seeks to minimize or avoid or reduce significant environmental impacts. And then lastly, it provides an adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP. So this is a brief flow chart of the CEQA process from start to finish. It begins with issuing an NOP or a notice of preparation, which then allows the city to begin preparing a draft EIR. Right now, you can see that we've made it through most of this process and we're currently at the planning commission hearing, which is the tail end of a project being able to be adopted. So more specifically, kind of going off of that, here are some specific CEQA milestones that the general plan has achieved itself. The CEQA process kicked off in July 2022. So it's been a while just for the CEQA process alone on this project. And the draft EIR was made public in September 2024. The public review period closed in November 2024 and then the final EIR was completed just a couple of weeks ago. So the draft EIR itself studied the following resource areas. So it covers topics ranging from aesthetics to energy to noise and population and housing to transportation and wildfire. So it really covers a lot. Within the analysis of the draft EIR, it was determined that eight of those aforementioned environmental resource areas would have a less than significant impact with no mitigation required. And additionally found that two resource areas would have no impacts at all, which are agriculture and forestry and mineral resources. It did note that two resource areas, noise and transportation, would result in significant unavoidable impacts with regards to construction noise and vehicle miles traveled. So along with each section of the draft EIR, it was determined if mitigation would be required to reduce or avoid project impacts. Accordingly, 28 mitigation measures were set forth and established through the draft EIR, which reduced or avoided impacts to the following sections. Aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, paleontological resources and wildfire. So once the draft EIR went out for public review, it was out for a 111 day public review period, which I think is maybe the longest that I've ever had an EIR out for public review. That period allowed public agencies, stakeholder groups and members of the public to read, review and comment on the EIR and its findings. In total, the city received 11 letters on the draft EIR, which were carefully reviewed by the city. Comments and concerns therein were raised by the public and were considered for incorporation or edits to the draft EIR. This was done through a response to comments document, which is included as section two of the final EIR and revisions were made accordingly and included as section three of the final EIR. So some of the comments that were received on the draft EIR were not specific to environmental issues or associated with the project or adequacy of the analysis of the EIR. So accordingly, no response was required for those types of comments, however, they were still acknowledged within that final EIR response to comments. As I mentioned, section three of the final EIR includes minor revisions to the draft EIR. They were for the following sections, project description, environmental setting, biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions and transportation. All of the edits that were included were all textual modifications. So they helped clarify or expand on information that, or language that was already included within the draft EIR. Accordingly, it was determined that those edits did not constitute a significant, any significant new information and would not result in any significant new impacts or substantial increase in severity of previously identified impacts. Therefore, recirculation of the draft EIR was not warranted. Alright, I think this is my last slide. So, so as far as next steps, Brent kind of touched upon this as well. So we really are kind of towards the end of the CEQA process. So we're going through those final hearings and then it will be brought forward to city council for consideration for adoption. In the meantime, the city has complied with section 15091 of the CEQA guidelines, which requires that a public agency before approving a project is to identify any significant impacts made and prepare a findings of significance and statement of overriding considerations. Additionally, the city has complied with section 21018.6 of the CEQA guidelines, which prepares a monitoring and mitigation program, the MMRP that I spoke upon, to address and ensure that the implementation of proposed mitigation measures within the EIR are followed. And then lastly, once the project is approved by city council, the city will prepare and file a notice of determination, or NOD, with the state clearinghouse and county clerk within five working days of the project being approved. And that is all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Open up for commissioner comments? Questions? Commissioners?
Chair? I have one. It's a technical comment and it bears on resolution number two, but it has to do with urban limit lines policy and it's on urban limit lines LU 11, page LU 27. And I want to change the word coordinate with Napa County to meet and confer with Napa County.
Thank you, Attorney Ross. Commissioners? Commissioner Altman?
City Attorney Ross may have just addressed what I wanted to address, but in the, I don't recall in the voluminous EIR documents, but in the packet cover note, there was a comment about the comment about the urban limit line expiring in twenty thirty, and it then continued on with a comment about an expectation, I believe was the word, to continue it... to confer with Napa County and continue it indefinitely. And I had some concerns and was curious as to exactly what the thinking and so on with all of that is, because part of me says, say, look, when we're five years short of twenty thirty, then we can come back and we can evaluate and make determinations as to, as a city, what we think makes sense, and at that point then have a conversation with the county and kind of go from there. Why would we want to extend what we currently have indefinitely? What's the benefit to us? And can we even do that at this point? So that's my inquiry, and I don't know if that's what City Attorney Ross was kind of dealing with, with his change of language there. So fill me in.
I think the basis is, other than that, I think coordinate implies that we're contracting away our police power. I just think meet and confer is a better terminology than coordinate. Coordinate has the implication that you coordinate for agreement. And since all the urban limit line originated with an initiative measure, it's not some... to be an act of equal dignity, it's got to be something that would originate from an initiative measure. Hope that was straightforward.
I sort of get it, being a non-attorney.
Commissioner Avalon?
Director Cooper, thank you for your updates to the American Canyon general plan. I found it to be very comprehensive and detailed, and I think it's also progressive. So I appreciate that. I have a question, and forgive me, but this is on the first packet, Slide Eight, and it was concerning... My question was about the D-zone. I'm not sure if I heard properly. And something about that we could possibly build housing on the D-zone, but my question is, is that too close to the airport?
Commissioner Avalon, that's a great question. We aren't proposing any land use changes within the area covered by the airport's D-zone, but because the airport land use plan previously made residential inconsistent or incompatible, we hadn't made changes in that regard. But should the City Council decide this is something to pursue, we could do so knowing that it's compatible with the airport land use plan. And it is closer than now, but the plan itself would acknowledge that housing is permitted within certain areas of their D-zone.
Thank you.
So thank you again both for your presentation. It was nice to see the proposed circulation and the wildfire mitigation plans. That was really nice to see. Also, the airport land use, bringing in the Zone D to, like you said, bring in new opportunities. So that was nice to see as well. I have a question about the climate change policies. We do have the moratorium on the fuel station, and I just have to ask this question. Do we have a moratorium, or are we talking about not having any more drive-throughs in the future?
Oh. That hasn't been a part of the general plan, but should after the general plan be adopted or any time really, because the policies are already there, if there were a direction to pursue that by the City Council, it's arguable that there could be a linkage there. But that would be something we call an implementation of the general plan and not part of the general plan itself.
And then our next general plan would be due in twenty forty-five?
Well, a general plan is never done. A comprehensive general... like taking everything and doing it is once in a generation for most cities, but I expect, you know, we're going to be seeing on the heels of this completion, all kinds of different ideas and amendments and things. And that's all normal and natural, and it's a healthy thing as well for the growth and betterment of the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Goss?
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the city and the consultants, first of all. I know that these plans are long, long processes and take a lot of coordination and research and expertise and time, and I think both the general plan and the EIR are well done. So congrats. I did have a question about a couple of the policies in the general plan, and I understand that the general plan, you know, is essentially a set of guidelines for future development to follow, right? Specifically, I have questions about some of the land use policies. Land Use eleven point three is to preserve agricultural and open space, and I saw that it had been edited to acknowledge that the city urban limit line may be amended during the term of the general plan. And, you know, that policy promotes defining the urban limits of the city and preserving agricultural and open space, as it says in its name. There's also Land Use twelve point one to maximize economic development, explicitly supporting new industrial and business parks. And so I guess I'm curious, since the urban limit line may be amended, since... which I presume would mean zoning changes, like that new area would have to be zoned, which policy takes precedence? Which is the priority? Preserving open space or maximizing economic development? How are those decisions going to be made?
Those are great questions.
That's what I'm here for.
I know, it's great. Our general plan is also particularly when it comes to our ultimate city boundary, whether it's an urban limit line change or a sphere of influence change, with respect to Napa County. So we're all very familiar probably with the agricultural land reserve and conservation policies in the county. The county itself, though, has development pressures for non-agricultural uses, and they acknowledge that actually in their two thousand eight general plan update. For the Hess Laird property, they specifically identified that as future industrial property should the demand be needed sometime in the future. In the meantime, up until the county recently amended their general plan, that was agricultural watershed. But the general plan had sort of earmarked that as potential expansion of the Napa Airport Business Park. And so the county itself has pressures, and so there is always this tension between what... is this a good time for property that is lar... most of the county area that isn't already developed is designated agricultural watershed. And so the question is always, is this the time that some of it would be converted to something else? And is this the right location? Is this the right time? And so on. And so our general plan is kind of reflecting that, because if we're going to grow, we're growing into the county area. So as we're looking at it, the county has already designated areas as industrial. There are other policies in the county that say that urban growth belongs in cities. And I think it's pretty easy to conclude that industrial development is an urban development. So there are... there's a context in which all of these decisions are made, and they get decided through the meet and confer process, for the most part, with Napa County.
Okay. So it's an ongoing conversation with the county as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd like to add something, too. Ultimately, you know, specifically with regard to your question on policies, they're going to come up when a particular development proposal comes forward, and that's when the issue of general plan consistency is to be determined. And there's a standard for that that was articulated and confirmed in case law, and it really puts the burden back on then the decision-making body to resolve those seemingly conflicting policies. And I think I can cite it. You know, it says, "An action will be deemed to be consistent with the general plan if it furthers the general plan policies without hindering them." So you might think, well, that's six of one and a half dozen of the other, but I think what that means is you, as the decision-makers, have to balance those policies then for whatever the envelope that comes before you and decide whether it's consistent with those policies under that standard. So that would be like the implementation of what Brent said. That's how it would come up. So if that's helpful.
It is. Thank you.
If there are no other Commissioner comments, I'd like to open up public comment.
Okay, we have Yvonne Beginsky.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, thank you. Thank you. I know what a bear it is to put a plan like this together. I also know that there are things that are inadequate in this plan. I'd like to address a few of them. This plan does not address climate adaptation for the city of American Canyon. It does not address seawater rise. It does not address increasing heat and how this is going to impact the land around American Canyon. It does talk about the urban limit line, which now butts up against Napa County, but there's only two pieces of property. There's actually one piece of property that it butts against that's listed currently as ag watershed. The other piece of property has already been zoned... that Hess Laird has already been zoned industrial. It doesn't have any kind of defining green space, any kind of green belt around the city of American Canyon. It is strictly an urban environment, and if they're looking at the only green belt around there, that's... they're looking at investing in that as an urban environment as well. The general plan designates creeks in residential areas as open spaces. There are already stream setback rules by the state of California that must be adhered to, and I believe these creeks are often found in open space, but I don't believe they are open space designations on their own. I know that many of these creeks go between homes, between warehouses, and there is no access to the public who wouldn't even be able to get to those creeks. Altogether, including the creeks and public parks, less than twenty percent of American Canyon's land falls in the open space category. Right now, the state of California is asking for a thirty-thirty open lands policy throughout the state that translates to thirty percent of the land to be conserved by twenty thirty. They are asking each municipality to do its fair share. American Canyon has fallen short of that. What caught my eye was the impact of all the development on biological species that, quote, "with mitigation measures would be reduced to a less than significant level." I have been following the EIRs and the development in this community, and I mean, if you consider habitat destruction and a complete habitat destruction as not having any impact, environmental impact on these habitats, you should have a conversation with the Autobahn Society that is out there every single Sunday with walks and measuring the wildlife and saying they're already seeing a decline, they're seeing an impact throughout the community. I know I have three minutes, and I'm not going to be able to say everything I've written. I'm going to say that I am very concerned. I'd like to see a more detailed response in some of these areas. I've got two pages of things I commented on, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Is there anyone else who has not turned in a card that would like to speak on this item? Okay, and there's no one on Zoom.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment. Do I have a motion with the amendment? We have three resolutions, correct?
And just to be clear, you have to do three motions in three of those.
Do I have a resolution...
All righty. I will make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending the City Council of the City of American Canyon. One, certify the comprehensive technical general plan update final environmental impact report, SCH number twenty twenty-two oh seven double oh thirty-eight. Two, adopt CEQA findings of fact and a statement of overriding considerations. And three, adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Do I have a second?
A second. Motion.
Nicole, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Chair Devett Muhammad?
Aye. Do I have a motion for the second resolution?
I'll make a motion to Planning Commission to create a resolution recommending that the City Council of the City of American Canyon adopt the comprehensive twenty forty technical general update plan and policies to sustain compliance with the twenty twenty-four Napa County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
Do I have a second?
As noted.
To meet and confer with Napa County.
Yep. To meet and confer with Napa County, making the verbiage change, correct?
I will second that recommendation.
Or that motion. That motion.
Nicole, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Chair Devett Muhammad?
Aye. And do I have a motion for the third resolution?
I'd like to make that motion that a resolution recommending the City Council of the City of American Canyon adopt the zoning code amendments to ensure consistency with the general plan and the twenty twenty-four Napa County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Chair Devett Muhammad?
Aye. Moving on to business, I will excuse myself. Vice Chair Plummer?
Thank you, Chair Muhammad. Moving on to business item number four, two eight five Napa Junction Citation Appeal.
Thank you, Vice Chair Plummer and Planning Commission Brent Cooper. We're continuing to discuss with the appellant some options for their property, and I'm pretty confident we'll have something to bring back to you for a decision at your next
The Commissioners like to make a recommendation on continuance?
Yes, I will make a motion that we once again continue the two eighty-five Napa Junction Citation Appeal to our next Planning Commission meeting scheduled for April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Just... Just one moment, please. Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
And Chair Devette Mohammed has recused herself from the side.
I will pass the down, and chair back to Chair Mohammed.
Thank you, Vice Chair Plummer. Moving on to management and staff oral reports.
Thank you, Chair Mohammed. Brent Cooper, I left my spreadsheet over here, so I, I'm over here now. Um, I'll just, uh, touch bases on some of the current projects happening here, um, in community development department, uh, and some of the highlights. Um, we have, uh, there is a development agreement which, uh, locks in approvals over the long term for the Napa Airport Commerce Center at South Kelly and Devlin Road. Um, they were approved for five years, and they have applied to extend that, um, vestings called, um, for their project for an additional ten years. And so, uh, we're evaluating that right now. We plan to bring that to you, uh, I think in your next meeting. Uh, so, um, we'll get to talk about development agreements. So we're looking forward to that. Um, the Jevanoni Logistics Center, um, they had a subdivision map that was, uh, expires if, um, there isn't a, a recordation and progress on that. Um, and so they had an extension approved by the city council at their first meeting in March, um, coming up. Um, on canyon estates, um, I'd mentioned that there are six, uh, lots where we've, uh, worked with them, and they can fit their floor plans. It's fine. Um, they've submitted another two challenging, uh, lots, uh, defined homes that can fit in there without having to completely regrade everything. Um, it looks very encouraging, uh, and, uh, so I'm looking forward to knocking two more off of the list. I really appreciate, uh, Richmond Americans' diligence at finding ways in which to, uh, plot their floor plans onto the lots without regrading all the hills that have been so carefully done. Um, what is also nice about this project is they have a lot of selection of floor plans that will be available, many of them single-story. So even though it may not be custom homes, as we might have hoped, uh, the homes, I have confidence are going to be really attractive and varied, and, um, it'll, it'll be a nice addition, and I appreciate their efforts to work within the areas on the lots that they have, um, which is very nice.
So can, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
Is, is it permissible to do a custom if you want to, or is it now got to be a, a Richmond home?
Uh, Richmond Americans purchased, um, there are two lots that were sold to individuals, um, and they have purchased the remaining thirty-three lots, and their intent is to build the lots themselves.
Can see you on that. Are, are they, do you know, sorry, um, if their plans are to keep the lots intact or to partition them, uh, because I know they're sizable lots, so they'd be partitioned to have multiple homes on lots versus single homes?
Um, their plan are, are single homes. Um, the lots themselves are, um, large per, in accordance with the zoning for the property. Now, I'm not going to get into state law and accessory units and, uh, SB nines. There's a whole alphabet soup of laws where there are exceptions to what our zoning laws are, but I think your question's more build it per zoning, and, and the answer, as far as I have indicated, is yes. And I think that's pretty much my, um, update for you, if you haven't, if you have any questions, things going on in town.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Do we have any commissioner items? No? All right. It is eight forty-five, and I will adjourn the meeting. Good night, American Canyon.